Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have everybody stand just for a minute? I'd like to take a moment. We lost someone in our community, Beatrice Stark, B. Stark. She's from Stark Service on Cass, which we all have known for many years. And she was also one of our very first, I think, second local treasurer we had in the city. So if we could take a few moments, please. Thank you very much.
Bunton.
Here.
Campbell.
Here.
Dempsey.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Hill.
Here.
Crapp.
Here.
Mensah.
Here.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports, including our quarterly department head reports. But we're going to move things around a little bit. We're going to have the presentation by the Bath City Association for the $1,000 award to three homeowners who are restoring multi-use houses to single-family homes. So we're going to do that one first, then we'll do the marker, and then the quarterly reports.
Lois Uhlens is doing it.
Okay. And Lois Uhlens, if you'd like to come up, please.
Mayor Dempsey, city commissioners, citizens, I represent the Bath City Association tonight. Marty Ellison is the chairperson, and she couldn't be here. So I am trying to stand in for her. One of the goals of an organization, if it wants to stay on focus, is to set goals. And one of the goals of the Bath City Association this year was to support the efforts of folks who were looking at converting from multi-use to single-family residence. And we offered applications, and the criterion are rehab no more than three years old, completion within the next six months, and that's about it. I think I should have applied, but I don't think they'd give it to me. And so we have three awards tonight. I don't know if everybody's here. I am, and Hope Cole from Lincoln Street. And I'd like to go to you. But I'd also like to ask you, is your project done, and did it go the way you thought?
We're right in the middle of it, and it never goes the way you think it will. But we are so grateful for this gift. We want to thank you, Ms. Uhlens, and the whole Bath City Association. We are in the middle of fixing up our floors and then trying to get our windows working again. We have forty...
Six.
Six windows. And they all have been painted shut, because when someone doesn't own the home, but they own it for a business, they don't take care of it like you would an actual house. So we're really grateful.
I understand, and here's your check.
Thank you very much.
You won. Okay. Recently, I got the ancestry DNA test, and it says I'm 99% Polish, which is what I thought. So this next name, I feel that it's rather easy to pronounce. Ms. Olivia Stevanovsky. And her project is on North Street. The next one is on Eldridge, and it is for Mr. Michael Raymond.
Thank you.
Oh, you got dressed up for us.
Yeah, I did. I just left, like, literally like five minutes ago, so...
Okay, well, here's your check.
Thank you so much.
And what stage is your project in, and does it go on?
So I bought the house in March last year, started working on it in May of last year. I have like three weeks or less left. It's a complete, all-new electrical, all-new plumbing, all-new windows. I'm like 30 grand over budget, but hey.
That's okay, not...
Yeah, and I was born and raised in Mount Clemens, so, you know, I don't mind, you know, fixing a house this year. So, yeah.
Nice. Okay, thank you. And to the participants, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, the presentation of the historical commission, from the historical commission, of a historical marker for 33 South Highland. And I'm not sure who... Oh, you are. Sorry.
Hi, I'm John Bryant from the Mount Clemens Historical Commission, Mayor Dempsey, council, and citizens. Tonight, we wanted to present a historical marker to Carrie Kacharka for 33 South Highland, if you're here. There you are.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
So I have to say that, you know, we get a variety of applications in for houses. Some of the applications are more thorough than others. We're often asking for any history of the home, architect, et cetera. And I've got to say that you did a lot of extensive research over the last several years since you've had the house. So it was fun reading about the Hackman family who, you know, built the home in '41, and a lot of history in it, and good tidbits about the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, if you'd like to, you can do the introduction. Okay.
We do want to introduce our new command officer for the Mount Clemens post, Sergeant Kevin Gillespie.
So my predecessor, Sergeant McFadden, was here for a while.
Sergeant, excuse me. You can use the mic, because they won't be able to hear on TV.
Sorry. My predecessor, Sergeant McFadden, was here for a few years. He did an excellent job. I fully intend to do an excellent job as well. I've been with the department 18 years. Sergeant McFadden was promoted to a lieutenant, so he popped, he got out of the spot. And so I was the fortunate one to receive the nod to take over Mount Clemens. A little bit about myself, I'm married, I have three kids. Other than that, I love what I do. I'm looking forward to a lot of new projects that we've already getting rolling. I've only been here a couple of weeks, but we've got some new ideas, and we're going to change some things around a little bit, just to be there more for the community. That's what we're going to be there for. And there's a lot of things going on, you know, that we have to address. So I'm sure you've heard, there's some crime this weekend, that we're on full tilt getting it solved. So that's where we're at.
Well, welcome on board.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
We're happy to have you, yes.
Okay, now, we are going to have the quarterly department head reports. And I don't know, who wants to start?
We're going to start with Captain Hoppy with the Mount Clemens Fire Department.
Good evening. So I passed out real quick, a quick synopsis, in case I miss anything. For the past quarter, under training, we've, I forgot my glasses, as I was running around.
You want mine?
We've got a rich training in for the year. We've been very fortunate, the last couple of years, we've started to coordinate training with Clinton and Harrison, which has worked out really well, as far as keeping the engine staffed and that, why we're involved in different training functions. We do have some additional training coming up in-house in the fall. We participate in a live burn with Exalta Finishing. This is something we do during the year. We'll train with Exalta on confined space, on live burn, and it works out well. It's a good familiarity with the staff at the plant, the fire brigade, and it also allows us to get a little bit extra training on stuff we wouldn't normally be able to get our hands on that's in the plant. Lieutenant Candela continues to take the lead in our EMS department. He's keeping up us, keeping us all up on our current requirements, and he's been scheduling continuing ed classes and CPR, and he's involved in the community doing CPR. Anybody who wants to do a CPR class, any questions they have, they get ahold of Nick, and he takes care of it. Very lucky to have Nick. We've been fortunate enough, I'm going to thank Mr. Tingley, we've been fortunate enough to obtain several structures throughout the city, various buildings. This has been very beneficial. We don't get a lot of buildings we can go out and practice on, tear them up, work on forcible entry, work on rescue, different techniques that we, and try to make streamline our operations. So thank you very much, Brian, for all your help in that. We've been working on possibly getting immunizations going again. We used to get immunizations. Personnel's been very helpful in that. We're looking at getting heavy boosters for all the guys involved in the department. That's something we're working on. We're trying to coordinate, we're getting going. And then the last big thing we have going under training, again, I want to say thank you to Ms. Kuneth, our New World Dispatch system is going to be coming online. This has been going on for, what, two years you've been working on this? Two years. Lot of big investment by the city, big investment by the county. This is a step towards bringing every, all the fire departments, emergency services underneath the umbrella of the new dispatch center over there on Grospack. It's going to really change the way we operate, change our, everything is going to change overnight. Starting Monday, the computers and the engines will be online, and then the following week, everything is supposed to go up online. And also, Linda's worked on his captainship and spent a ton of time in firefighter curriculum. He's over there right now, working on this thing. So we're very appreciative of all their efforts. As far as vehicles and equipment, the fleet's in good status. The aerial, the aerial just had its annual test on Saturday. It passed, very, very minor little maintenance issues that we have to deal with that. So the platform and the bucket are all recertified for the year. That's a big operation that takes a guy all day to do it. The pumps have all gone out, they've all been retested, recertified, they've all passed. There's no issues there. We're currently evaluating the confined space equipment. Our confined space equipment has a lifespan on it, and now that we're involved with the county, the county teams, we still do have confined space equipment that we have to maintain a minimum amount, and we're evaluating that, some of it's up for replacement. The annual hose testing is all done, which was a project this year, but it worked out good. And then finally, as far as run volume and statistics, I've been, I believe it's all included, Anne burned it for me today, it's all included in that packet. As you go through and see, you can, our run volume continues to grow at a steady rate, current rate, we will again increase our overall run volume for the year. We've been going up by about 100 runs per year, and with the new dispatch system coming online, we anticipate the run volume will probably increase maybe a little bit more towards the end of the year. Through this report, the run, we were at 1,459, and then when I was typing this late last night, we were up to 1,772 runs for the year so far. And over the last 45 days, we've averaged 10 calls per day, 12 structured fires, and the neighboring communities have had a couple of pretty substantial fires that the guys went out and assisted on. And also in the packet, there's a summary of our cost recovery to date. To date, we've billed $29,250. Now, that is just for false alarms, and that was billed, most of that was billed in the last quarter, and that was $25,600. And one thing we've been looking at, and we're going to try to get some more information and get it together to bring to present it, is we're looking at cost recovery in some other areas. There appears to be a substantial revenue stream that we haven't tapped into, that it'll take a little bit of effort to get the material together. Possibly, you'll have to pass an ordinance, and then we can look to try to recover some more costs for the city. And then what they said is, I was walking out, to remind everybody that pancake breakfast will be the day of the Soapbox Derby.
When is that, right?
And I think seven o'clock. Was it the ninth, September 9?
Yeah.
They were shouting it to me as I ran off.
So that's all I have.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just one from my clarification. What is confined space equipment? Just from my knowledge.
It varies from helmets with lights on them, harnesses, rigging, for, you know, ropes, carabiners, ascenders, the harness is a complete set, and then our ropes under the confined space stuff, rope has a 10-year service life. So back when Mr. Bellmore was still here, we were, we had replaced all of our stuff under the water department's budget, because at that time, we provided confined space for the water department. And since that time, the county's team has come online, so we haven't been taking money from the water department budget to buy this equipment. So it's kind of gotten to a point where now we have to replace it. So what we're going to do is, we have a lot of old rope and service on the engines now, that's going to come out. We're going to use that as service rope, and that's rope like we'll haul axes and chainsaws and ladders with, and then we'll replace the minimum amount of rope that we have to, because it's expensive. You wouldn't think it's expensive, but it is. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Welcome, sir.
Next, we'll have Sarah Price of the Human Resources Department.
Okay, the city of Mount Clemens ended the second quarter in our fiscal year with 70 total employees. We had 61 full-time and nine part-time employees. We had a new water sewer maintenance worker begin his employment, as well as, just inside, actually, the third quarter, but we had a new HR assistant join the staff as well, and we are excited to have both of those individuals join our team. We have promoted in-house candidates to the position of utility supervisor. And also, within the last quarter, we've advertised for interviewed candidates and offered positions to individuals for the positions of seasonal laborers, a water filtration plant operator, bus drivers, a maintenance worker, and a wastewater treatment plant operator. The full-time positions that were available were filled by internal transfers or promotions. We are currently accepting applications for a part-time dial-a-ride bus driver position. If you are interested in this position, or any positions that the city may have available, please visit our website, www.cityofmountclemens.com, and click on the link for job opportunities. We do have an employment application that is required, and that is available on our HR page. In addition to the movement of the employees, the HR office processed seven biweekly payrolls, three retiree payrolls, and two miscellaneous payrolls. We also completed three workers' comp claims and responded to a variety of employment verifications, wage surveys, and insurance questions, as well as performed general maintenance to our employee records. Within the last quarter, we sadly lost two pension recipients, and we have processed their records accordingly. And lastly, the Clementines newsletter was created and distributed to all Mount Clemens residents. As with any edition of the newsletter, additional copies are available here at City Hall, or can be accessed electronically through our website.
Any questions for, Mrs. Summers?
Price.
Price. You know what? He had Summers in here, too. Did you see that? Sorry. Apparently not.
Brian Tingley, Director of Community Development.
Okay, in the second quarter of this year, 450 building, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and zoning permits were issued. There were 950 new code enforcement cases open. There were 215 rental inspections and vacant property verifications. Eighty rental units received certificates of compliance. There were 20 new certificates of occupancy issued, both for residential and commercial, and the city's contractor performed 151 grass and wheat cuttings. In conjunction with the updates to the department fee schedule that were recently adopted, we have created new permit applications, which are now available on the city website as fillable PDF forms, so we're hoping that helps with our contractors and homeowners who are pulling permits with the city. In June, I took part in a SEMCOG University panel discussion on Parks and Recreation Initiatives. The city's MEDC crowdfunding campaign for the MacArthur Park kayak launch was part of that discussion. For the city's fireworks event, $1,800 in revenue was generated for those who chose to take part in the advanced boat slip rental. This spring, the planning commission approved site plans for new single-family homes at 71 Crocker Boulevard and 15 South Bon Grashit, so we're excited to see new single-family homes being built. I mean, it's been like eight, nine years since that's happened, so... And the planning commission also reviewed zoning ordinance amendments for accessory buildings, which were ultimately adopted by the city commission. For the city's MEDC redevelopment-ready community certification program, the city is now 81% certified. Staff has been preparing several documents related to this. We've developed an economic development services tab on the city website, which contains information related to potential redevelopment sites, a guide to development, and other information. And the final steps for certification will be the adoption of some zoning ordinance amendments, which the city commission approved a contract for those in July, as well as the adoption of a six-year capital improvements plan.
Any questions? Commissioner Bunton.
The boat rentals that are, yeah, boat rentals that you were speaking of, is that an increase over last year, or a decrease, or how is it compared to last?
The revenue was an increase. There was a slight drop in the number of rentals.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
And it's something we've only been doing for four years, so it's kind of hard to gauge, you know, where those trends are.
Thank you.
If you remember, we had increased the fee, so...
And we still are getting more money, but a little less occupation, so maybe that'll increase, too.
Hopefully.
Yeah, we have some other ideas for next year. I know I've talked to Mickey about potentially partnering with some of the businesses in addition to the fee, of them getting coupons to some businesses downtown, and hopefully draw those people in, you know, into the businesses.
Excellent.
Anybody else?
I just had a question about, I've had some people complaining, and I know my blood pressure raises every time I drive down north and south Bon Grashit, that is the easement the homeowner's responsibility to weed or mow the lawn there? Because I have several businesses, it seems like, that are near where I live, that aren't doing that, and it, I'm ready to go out with my own weed whacker and just take care of it, because it drives me absolutely crazy, and I know that some other people have noticed that as well. And so I don't know if it's the city's responsibility, and I should be complaining to Jeff? Sorry? So can you...
You're referring to between the sidewalk and the street?
Right, exactly.
That would be the property owner's responsibility. So if anybody sees those spots, instead of calling Commissioner Crapp, you can call Community Development and let us know.
Okay. And Commissioner Crapp will call you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ford.
Have your fees went up when you cut people's lawn that don't respond to the plight lady?
No, those, the amount that we charge for cuttings are made the same the entire time I've been employed with the city. And I think that was started maybe a few years before I arrived, so it's $105 for a residential lot, and $157.50 for a commercial lot. And those fees were established based on, you know, the cost to the city in terms of processing those, staff time involved in creating invoices, staff time involved in tagging the properties, that's how those fees were generated.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Tingley.
Next, we'll have Linda Kuneth, Finance Director.
For the fourth quarter of 2016-17, our end of fiscal year is always busy for the finance department in closing out the year. In preparation of that, we had the proposed budget for 1718, which we're currently in. It was compiled, reviewed by City Commission. We had three work sessions, a public hearing on May 1st, and the commission adopted the 1718 budget on May 15th. The 1617 fiscal year budget amendments for all city funds were approved at the June 19th commission meeting, and staff is working on the year-end schedules and statements in preparation of the annual audit, which is going to happen in the next couple of weeks. Commission approved the establishment of the city of Mount Clemens Retiree Healthcare Trust to fund the post-retirement benefit obligation, and the new trust board met for the first time in July. The assessing staff had 76 property appeals at the July Board of Review, and the staff is processing building permits and deed changes. Starting July 1st, the treasurer's counter in City Hall can accept debit or credit card payments at city, for any city bill, including taxes, utility payments, and parking tickets. Customers may still pay cash, check, or money order. If you have any questions, contact the treasurer's office at 586-469-6818, extension one, or go to the city's website. Summer 2017 property tax calculations were compiled, new tax bill payment information was updated, including information about accepting the credit and debit card payments at the treasury office counter, and 6,347 tax bills were mailed on June 30th. Payment of summer taxes is due to the city by September 15th to avoid penalty and fees. City had an average of 2,200 utility bills per month processed this past quarter. 164 properties had delinquent water bills, water bill payments or broken arrangements and were shut off, generated $3,500 in fee revenue to reestablish the service. 417 parking stickers were sold this last quarter, totaled just over $30,000. Usage of the ParkMobile app to pay for parking continues to increase, and this past quarter totaled $16,400. An amendment to the emergency dispatch agreement Captain Hoppy talked about, and that's been a big project. We're very happy to see that go online in the coming days, actually. And purchasing, very busy department, wrote and posted 15 bids on Mitten Cable and City Website, processed three insurance claims, 258 purchase orders, 40 agenda items for commission, 20 service orders were placed for building repair and maintenance, plumbing, electrical, door HVAC, those kind of items. You have any questions?
Thank you.
No, go ahead. Sorry. I'll see you later.
Next, we'll have a report from Jeanette Best, Director of Utilities.
Hopefully, you can hear me. I don't know, this shortening is a problem. I know you've all got the report for the statistics for our departments, but there are three things I'd like to point out. We've produced 194 million gallons of water in this past quarter. We've treated 512 million gallons of wastewater, and we've responded to over 300 customer requests. Our contract with F&amp;V Operations ended April 30th, and we've developed new water rates, which were implemented July 1st. At the wastewater treatment plant, the MDEQ issued us a new wastewater discharge permit on May 17th, and it became effective June 1st. We completed and submitted the revised facility monitoring plan to the MDEQ. Our bio-sol is dewatering centrifuge, which has been out of service for quite a while, was shipped to a repair facility in West Virginia on April 18th. We actually, it's manufactured by a company called Bird, so we actually flew it out the top of the building, which we have pictures of, it's kind of cool. Two-story building, and out goes this 6,000-pound piece of machinery. We continue to repair some of the oxidation-ditch rotors, and we're awaiting the last bearing to finish that project up. We began an asset management program in May by cleaning and televising all the city's sewers using a grant from DQ, excuse me. At the water plant, we completed the consumer confidence report, and it's been made available to all customers. A link to the report is on the city's webpage, and copies are available at City Hall at the little window. We've completed and submitted to the MDEQ the required quarterly testing. We continued our repair and replacement of damaged safety railings and walkway gratings, and basically doing housekeeping and repairs throughout the plant. In the water and sewer maintenance department, we developed a fire hydrant flow testing procedure and a... procedure, and a permit was implemented, and Brian takes care of the permit for us. But now we at least have a policy as to how, if you need to do fire suppression testing for the hydrant, we have a policy and a procedure to do that.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Wood, Assistant City Manager, Department of Public Services.
During the last quarter, the Department of Public Services had attended meetings with MDOT and the county regarding future street repair projects. We've set up and cleaned up the many special events, including the art fair, car cruises, and the fireworks, planted and watered flowers at the many locations throughout the city, performed the monthly methane monitoring, and a DEQ mandated dewatering event of the methane ventilation system, cleaned, graded, and set up the ball diamonds at Memorial Field for rentals as scheduled. We have begun the street striping program for this year and replaced traffic signs as needed due to damage or poor reflectivity. We've held monthly safety and training meetings with all DPS staff. We've issued one thousand three hundred and eighty-two parking citations, generating approximately one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in meter revenue, supplied services to over twelve thousand persons utilizing the dial right system. And I also would like to mention that the Clinton River Watershed Council is hosting a free seminar at Metro Beach on August fourteenth from seven PM till eight PM. The seminar is to promote practices that keep our freshwater resources clean and healthy, and is free for anyone interested in attending.
Questions? Commissioner Ford?
Are you aware that some of the alleys in Mount Clemens have sewers in them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
And our last report will be by Kathy Martin, Deputy City Clerk.
All right. The City Clerk's Office is busy preparing for the upcoming city election to be held on November seventh, two thousand seventeen. The Office of Mayor for a two-year term and three positions of City Commissioner for four-year terms will be on the ballot. The big news is that the City of Mount Clemens, along with every other municipality in Michigan, is receiving brand-new voting equipment as part of the statewide changeover. There will be no cost to the city, as the equipment will be funded with federal funds through the Help America Vote Act. As a result, all of the municipalities in Macomb County will all now be using the same equipment serviced by the same company, which is electronics, systems, and software. Clerk Borges and I will be attending countywide training for the new equipment at the end of the month, and then conducting several training sessions for our election workers. The new equipment will be on display here at City Hall for our residents to view before the November election, if they wish. We will be mailing out approximately one thousand three hundred and seventy absentee voter applications to residents who are on the city's permanent absentee voter ballot list around Labor Day. I would encourage any resident over the age of sixty to call our office and be put on the list. That way, you'll be mailed an AV application every time there is an election in Mount Clemens automatically, without having to request one. And just a reminder, the last day to register to vote in the November election is Tuesday, October tenth. The City Clerk's Office has also been working on processing approximately five hundred business registrations, as well as licenses for vending machines, amusement devices, solicitors, and non-municipal waste haulers. We've also been working with the City Attorney's Office in recovering penalties from numerous delinquent business registrations. We continue to accept applications for appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. These positions are an excellent way to give back to the community and have your voice be heard. Vacancies remain on the following boards: Beautification Advisory Committee, Board of Zoning Appeals, Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, Construction Code Board of Appeals, Historic District Commission, Planning Commission, and the Traffic Safety Committee. If you're interested in serving on one of these important boards, or if you have any questions about any of this information presented tonight, please contact the City Clerk's Office at four six nine six eight one eight, extension three. Back to you.
Any questions? Thank you.
No.
Motion to adopt the agenda, and I think we have a change.
Yes, City Administration is requesting to remove item nine A from the agenda this evening.
Okay, anyone else?
Yes, I would like to move item ten A to pull it from consent.
That will be nine C?
E.
Yes.
So I said E.
Okay.
Ten A, nine E, okay. Any other changes? Need a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
For Ford.
Roll call, please.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, public participation. This is the time you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. You may speak on any, any subject, doesn't have to be before us this evening, whatever you're here for.
Hello, Ruthie Stevenson, sixty-nine Bain Street. There was a fire on northbound Greshit about a month and a half ago, and it was on those very, very, very hot days. And later on after that, I had people running up to me and saying, "Thank you for taking care of the firemen." And I said, "What are you talking about?" What happened was, it was like ninety degrees, and they were out there for some time, and there was no water. So when I came into town and found out about it, I walked over, and my neighbor, Miss Elise Bankhead, she says, "Ruthie, they need some water." I said, "Really?" And she says, "Here." She's a Fisher woman. She had a cooler full of ice water, you know, water that was chilling. She says, "Can you take that over to them?" So again, to the firemen, it's not Ruthie that supplied your water, it was Miss Elise Bankhead who thought enough of you on that day, and they were really, really, really appreciative, because it was one of those almost ninety-degree days. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, Ian Cole, twelve Lincoln Street. Since I'm here, I wanted to express concern about the crosswalk at Lincoln and Southbound Greshit. It has a button, so you press it to get the walk light, and we have a front row seat, so I see this often, but you have to press the button, and if you don't do it soon enough, you have to wait an extra light change. So people end up waiting there for several extra ticks, and they wonder, is it going to change? So what they end up doing is they end up going across when it says, "Don't walk." And when it does change, it's, I think it's only like a walk sign for a few seconds at most, so you're halfway across, four lanes of people flying down, and it's already flashing red to hurry up. So it just seems unsafe, and we use it often, and I see people, myself included, almost get hit. So just something to maybe think about, and maybe to bring up in another meeting, so thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Fournier, seventy Lodwick Street. I saw in the agenda that we have another, and heard that we had another TAP grant for next year for the, for the handicapped corners that we need repaired, and that's great. And I noticed that you gave the crosswalks that would be affected by this. I was hoping for that five hundred thousand dollars, that we could at least fit in the curbs that are, go into the parking lot behind Bass City, because there is no handicapped corners there, and you go zoom, you know, Jerry, go zooming down that, there's nowhere to go either, the sidewalk ends. So if, I'm hoping that that can be included there. And then I would like an update on the sidewalk program. I haven't seen a lot going on in a while, and I'm just wondering if we're still on it, or what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. That would be up to Administration, have to answer. I would prefer to answer after. You can tell them.
Can I just ask a question?
You sure can, if we can get your name and address.
My name is Lauren Fournier, the one oh four part for you, which is right behind two oh five Washington. My question is, if that property stays zoned the way it is, right now it's zoned, light residential, if the owner sells this property, and let's say a little factory decides it does want to go in there, are the property owners notified of this, or if they come in there with a light industrial project, can they just move forward with it?
We can have, it's up to you. If you want to answer now, get back there. Totally up to you if you have the answer.
There would be no public hearing notice, like there was for the rezoning request. It was just a use change to industrial or a site plan, there is no public hearing notice that's required.
So if somebody came in, let's say, decided they want to put a party store there, I don't know what that would be zoned.
A party store.
Say a cabinet factory, remember, we talked about that before? Could they just go in and make it a cabinet factory?
Yes.
They would need to go before the Planning Commission, but there would not be a public hearing involved. Residents would not be notified.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Ruth Redford, and I'm at one eighty-four Washington, and I did come to this meeting regarding the rezoning ordinance for the two oh five Washington, which I don't know why it was canceled, and I don't know if it'll be addressed at another meeting. But this is the fourth meeting that I have attended. Three of the Planning Commission, along with many of my neighbors, it's been very well attended, were very much against the rezoning to multifamily, and I thought it was very ironic that those three certificates for a thousand dollars were given to people who were changing multifamily homes to single-family homes, when we're trying to fight this multifamily rezoning ordinance. We all want, I mean, there's a church there, it's zoned, light industrial, which is ridiculous. We don't think that light industrial would really move in. It's all homes, all down Washington, all the streets leading to that corner. And I'll probably go over my three minutes, but, so, we've also had questions, because the gentleman who we believe owns it has proposed either multifamily apartment units or an adult foster care, and multifamily apartment units, we feel would be a disaster because of traffic and safety issues. There are young children in the area, our property values would go down. We're just, we're very much afraid of what that would happen, and we also don't know if it would be rezoned multifamily, is there any control over whether or not he puts the apartment in, or the adult foster care? We don't feel like we've gotten a lot of guarantees or answers. We don't know how this works. We're just residents. Most of us have lived there thirty years or more, and we're concerned about our neighborhood, because the church was used maybe on Sundays once in a while during the week, there weren't that many members. It really wasn't that great of a concern, but right now we are concerned, and we, we don't know how this all works. And, so anyway, I'm just here to speak on behalf of all of us that we would prefer single-family's homes, we don't want it multifamily-zoned, we certainly don't want an apartment going in there. The plans that we saw, the apartments would be very small, and we can just imagine what that would be like with, you know, they would possibly have guests over, and just the whole traffic issue of that area just wouldn't, would not be conducive to a good residential feel.
Just to let you know that the owner of the property is the one that pulled the agenda item tonight, because he is not sure what he's going to be doing at this point in time. So he's rethinking things.
Okay, well, thank you. And I did notice he wasn't here, and it does, and I guess that's part of our concern, and I think that's why there've been so many meetings, because he doesn't seem to have a clear, doesn't know what he's doing. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
I'm scheduled to be going.
Yeah, you have to come up, sorry.
So, I'm Bill Redford, I'm one eighty-four, Washington, and I just want to know if it's canceled, is it getting rescheduled and when?
We don't know. It's indefinite right now. It'll be up to the owner what he chooses to do down the road, and there is no time set.
I am also against totally anything other than single-family, just for the record, and, I mean, you know, anytime, well, it's all discussed, okay, sorry.
That's all right. Anyone else?
Yes, my name's Michael Zubis, I live on two two one Cass Avenue. I randomly had an idea about that address the other week, because I have, I live and work in the city, and I ride across it all the time, I ride through Washington Street. I think it's one of the best streets around in the city. And I've always thought that that place should, if anything, be owned by the city and turned into a recreation center. I think if that was turned into a, some sort of facility that the city could use, or the community can use, to join together to do activities year-round, that that would might be more beneficial than apartments or a house. And we'd be able to save the facility, too, because we wouldn't have to demolish anything. We'd be able to gut the inside and maybe put in some basketball court or something silly, something that the community would like. But that's just my opinion, that's, I just wanted to give that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Administrator, we didn't have any. I need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings.
Motion to approve the work session and the regular commission meeting on July seventeenth, two thousand seventeen.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, general business, nine B, adopt the Michigan Department of Transportation Resolution for Transportation Alternative Program TAP Funding. Need a motion?
Motion to adopt the resolution supporting the Michigan Department of Transportation Alternatives Program funding as presented.
For.
The City of Mount Clemens Department of Public Services has applied and received a conditional commitment from the Michigan Department of Transportation for a Transportation Alternatives Program grant called TAP. The work will consist of a downtown streetscape project in which there will be improvements to the ADA crosswalks, sidewalks, additional landscaping, bike racks, and benches. The grant amount of three hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars requires a one hundred thousand dollar local match from the city's major street fund, making the total project budget four hundred ninety-nine thousand seven hundred eighteen dollars. The grant requires the approval of the attached resolution supporting the project. The crosswalks and ADA ramps that will be worked on during this project include North Main and Cass Avenue, Walnut and Cass Avenue, McComb Place and Pine Street, and Pine and New Street.
Excuse me, are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Mansour?
I just wondered, it looks like our, in the last budget, our major street fund was just a little over a million dollars. Is this going to seriously impact major streets by taking out that hundred K?
I actually accounted for this in the budget, so this was, this was budgeted.
Perfect. So I just wanted to congratulate you for getting this TAP grant. You are just, just crazy getting the grants lately. Good for you, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Mansour?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Nine C, adoption of a resolution in support of the repeal, I want to say that loud, repeal of the Michigan Public Act two five six of two eleven, which is the Michigan Fireworks Safety Act. Do I have a motion?
Approve the adop, oh, go ahead. I move to approve the adoption of the resolution in support of the repeal of HB four two four four and Michigan Public Act two five six of two thousand eleven as presented, and forward the appro-
and forward the approved resolution to our state legislators.
Attached is a resolution offered by Macomb Area Communities Regional Opportunities, macro for short, that supports requesting that state legislatures repeal House Bill 4244 and strike Public Act 256 of 2011 pertaining to the Michigan Fireworks Safety Act. Reasons supporting this resolution include: limited local control of fireworks regulations, increased related nuisances to include, but not limited to, noise, air quality, debris, and defiance of time and date limit ordinances, increased 911 call activity, risk of injury, death, and property damage, thereby taxing local municipal services such as police, fire, and public works departments, and placing undue stress and anxiety upon residents, inability to enforce local and state laws related to commercial fireworks discharge, negative impact on veterans suffering from PTSD, and negative impact on our pets.
Any questions or comments?
Hi, just clarification. This would actually legalize all fireworks or from, okay. What are the limits of fireworks?
This is merely a resolution.
Well, yeah, but the resolution is asking...
That they repeal the present act, which is, which authorized fireworks the day before, the day of, and the day after certain holidays. If it's repealed, they'll probably come up with a new statute governing fireworks. To repeal it doesn't mean that all fireworks are going to be outlawed or prohibited.
I think this is macro, so it's, the whole Macomb County communities are asking to send these letters to the governor because of all the problems that we are experiencing with the fireworks. And, yeah, who knows what they'll, if they'll even listen to us. But it's always, you know, you're better off with numbers. Greater numbers, they're bound to listen. So, we've come together as a group to say, look, you know, you're putting all the responsibility on us. You made the law. But municipalities have very little, if any, control. You know, so we want to go back to the drawing board and start over.
So this is encouraging them to go back to the drawing board, to come up with a better plan than we have now?
Better plan, and maybe have a little bit more input from the local communities.
Or any.
Just for the record, I'm in favor of it. I just wanted to know, you know, what the latitude was involved.
Just as you know how many issues we have in the city here when it's time for fireworks.
Well, not only when it's time for fireworks, they do it all regularly without the holiday thing. It's just they don't preserve that stuff.
They don't follow the law as it's written.
That's what this is.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
9D, approve purchase and payment of invoices.
Move to approve purchase of payment and invoices as presented.
Second.
Are there any questions? Comments? Denise? I see you're still flipping through it, so...
I just, I'm sure that this is the case, but I'm looking on page 31, and it says bids posted on Mitten, posted on the website. But then on page 32 and 33, it doesn't include that language, but I'm sure that it was just forgotten. On the left-hand side, under the grave box on 31, it says bid posted on Mitten. But then when you go to 32, it's not on there. And when you go to 33, it's not on there.
All bids are posted on Mitten.
It's probably just forgotten language. I just want to point that out.
Probably. I don't know that we typically put it on there. But all bids are posted that way.
Okay.
Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Menser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Okay, 9E is 10A, appointments for boards, committees, and commissions. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the reappointment as presented.
Support.
Appointments to boards, committees, and commissions. For the planning commission, the mayor recommends reappointing Robert Schleicher to the planning commission. This is for a three-year term, which expires June 30th, 2019.
Yes. I brought it up, so I'm sure you have a comment.
I just have heard some concerns about Mr. Schleicher's participation. So, I just, I know he's been a longtime member of the planning commission, but I've heard some concerns about that. And so I just wanted to pull that and have the opportunity to vote on it.
Okay.
I didn't quite understand everything she said.
She apparently has heard some concerns about Mr. Schleicher. Is that him? Yeah, Schleicher, son of the planning commission. And she just wants to vote on it separately.
Can you tell us how long he's served approximately?
Not offhand.
But several terms?
Yeah, I would say he's probably on the planning commission over ten years, I'm sure.
And did he request reappointment?
Yes. I always give that option to people who are on current committees. Since they have served their volunteer time, they do not get paid for any of these committees. And I ask if they'd like to serve again. I have not had anybody come to me and tell me that there's an issue with him or an issue with anybody on the board. And I wish they would, if that's the case, because I wouldn't know any different if there is issues. So I am recommending reappointment.
I guess perhaps we could clear there. Is there something that you would like to share with us, or?
Was it regarding attendance, or?
If not, then we'll go ahead.
His attendance is fine.
I'd like to make a counter motion here. I think that Commissioner Crapp has some concerns, and I'd like to see her be able to discuss those with the community development director who runs the planning committee, and with the mayor. And I would like, my motion or counter motion would be that we table this until next session, next city session, so that she can address those concerns with the mayor and Brian Tingley.
Okay, we have to do the first motion, I think. Who made the first motion?
Actually, you vote on an amendment first, and then the motion.
We have to amend the first motion.
Okay, then I would like to amend the first...
No, the person who made the motion.
She did.
I did.
You did.
Yeah.
Amend your motion.
I'm amending my, I'm amending my motion that we table this discussion until Commissioner Crapp has opportunity to discuss the concerns with Brian Tingley and Mayor Dempsey.
Okay, you're amending your motion to approve...
Delaying this to the next commission meeting.
Right, this appointment. Who made that second?
Bunton.
Bunton, are you going along with the amendment?
Actually not, so let somebody else second it.
I can't, you made the amendment.
Can't?
You seconded the amendment.
We're just delaying it two weeks.
All right, I will agree with it.
Okay, now you can revote on that. Roll call.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menser?
Yes.
Okay, now...
That's it, right? It's tabled.
It's tabled, thank you. August 21st. You have to, August 21st.
Thank you.
You have to put a date with it, okay? Consent agenda. There is nothing.
Motion to, yes.
10B.
Yeah, motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Roll call.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Ford?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crapp?
Yes.
Menser?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, city managers report. A work session that was scheduled this evening at 5:45 was canceled by the request of the developer. I do apologize if that was inconvenienced for anybody here. The 137th Annual Old Crowd Parade will take place on Thursday, August 17th, at 9:00 a.m. The old crowd will gather on Main Street and Macomb Place before the parade begins. Rolling street closures in the downtown will take place while the parade is en route. And please join us for the Downtown Sight and Sound Concert on Friday, August 11th, featuring Magic Bus. The concert, sponsored by Mount Clemens Downtown Development Authority and Pettit Prin, Inc., will begin at 7:00 p.m.
Any questions, city manager? Okay, commissioners' comments. Commissioner Ford?
Over the last few days, there've been some incidents in Mount Clemens that are quite disturbing. One of them is the break-ins we were having on Clinton River Drive, and lately, the murder of a young man. I'm gonna call it an after-hours place. The new sergeant has a job, it's gonna be rough. And I wish him all the luck in the world.
Thank you. Commissioner Bunton?
I just, one comment. It happens this time of the year, and when the people who're doing the grass, whether it's the homeowners or the business people, they are still putting the grass in the streets, and it goes into the sewers, it blocks the drainage of the sewers. It is going to be a real problem. And if we don't start doing something about it now, ultimately, those sewers are gonna back up, they're gonna have to be replaced, they're gonna fall in, collapses, as what we've had on 14 Mile Road. So, I would like to encourage all the people who are doing your lot, you know, pick up your clippings, don't push them into the street, you know, whether it's the commercial people or the residents. We need to do a better job of keeping our, and very old sewer system functioning. And I guess that's, I guess want to also give my condolences to the Stark family at the loss of their matriarch. I met her, and, you know, she's just a wonderful, was just a wonderful person. And I really, really appreciated her. She was, I think she was in the car that I was in, or one of them, in our Santa parade. But she was just a wonderful person. So I thank the family for having her in our community and being so active in the community. And with a commissioner wisdom, I know you guys have missed it since I've been gone, so... This one I took off the door at Mount Clemens High School. And I thought it was kind of cool. So anyway, it goes like this. "The moment you accept responsibility for everything in your life is the moment that you gain the power to change anything in your life." Think about that one. That's by Al Elrod. And with that, we'll say goodnight.
Commissioner Menser?
There was a question earlier about the sidewalk program. I am the happy recipient today of a letter from the city for the sidewalks in front of my house in the Seminole Hills area. It's my understanding that all of Seminole Hills has begun receiving their letters. And I probably have several flags that I'm going to be responsible for. So, there's your update on the sidewalk program. I want to remind people that the Mount Clemens Optimist Club, of which I'm a board member, is collecting children's books for Little Free Libraries. We will be putting Little Free Libraries in eight places throughout Mount Clemens. Olson Park, Landale Park, Dorothea in North, Shadyside, Seminole, Martin Luther King, Landale, Esplanade. I think that's close. But we are collecting books, so please, if you have any children's books or if you're in the mood to donate to children's literacy and you're at a garage sale, pick up some children's books and you can bring them here. You can contact me, you can email me or call me, and I'll come and get them. We're really looking forward to getting, you know, this project completed fairly soon. If you've got kids at home with nothing to do this summer, Ray Township is doing something, something really cool. The residents of Mount Clemens are invited. Kids eight to 17 can go on a free airplane ride Saturday, August 12th, from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Ray Community Airport. You're gonna go out with a licensed pilot, they're gonna show you how the plane works, they're gonna show you the instrument panel, you get to fly around a little bit. There is no appointment necessary, but you need a written permission slip from a parent or guardian there that day. The forms are at the airport. Show up, sign up, and fly. That's what they're saying. So if you need more information, you can call 248-953-0374. This would be a wonderful precursor for your kids in preparation for the Selfridge, you know, Air Show, which is the 19th and 20th of this month. They've got a lot of special things planned for this, for the 19th and 20th because it is Selfridge's 100th anniversary. So please think about doing both of those things. Both of them are free. Mount Clemens Public Library has the Michigan Activity Pass available for free with your library card. There are 440 attractions that you can get a day pass for through your library card. Things like Meadowbrook and Cranbrook and Belle Isle, and the Michigan Science Center, and the DIA, and Algonax State Park. You can get in there free with a Michigan Activity Pass from your library card. Sea Life Aquarium, Legoland. You get kids home for the summer that you want them to have something to do, get the Activity Pass and do this stuff free. You can go on there, Mount Clemens' public library webpage, and you can say, what attractions are covered by the Activity Pass within 25 miles of my home, within 50 miles of my home, or if you want to go to the UP, you know, with a couple hundred miles of my home. So you can, you can pick and choose that. It's a wonderful thing to get kids exposed to stuff. And to echo Commissioner Bunton, my condolences to the Stark family has been an institution in this city for a very long time. And I believe that she has a grandson that works for the city in the utilities department, I believe. So our condolences to her and the entire, you know, the entire family. And that's what I got today. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Crapp?
I had the pleasure of attending a seminar through the Macomb County Planning and Economic Development Department. And they had, they had a seminar that was specifically designed for elected officials on business attraction and planning 101. So it was kind of a get-your-toes-wet on how, all of those things. And it was really informative and quite interesting, and so I learned a lot. So thank you to them. I want to say congratulations to all the recipients of the Bass City Grants. And I think that's a really, a great addition to the city of taking those multi-unit residential, multi-unit facilities and then switching them to single resident, or single-family homes is a good thing for everyone around in our city, so... I would, I mentioned the grass and the weeds on the easement of both northbound and southbound Grashit. If you live on northbound or southbound Grashit, if you have a business on northbound or southbound Grashit, it doesn't cost any money to pull your weeds. So, get out there and pull those weeds. When people drive in and out of our city and they see that we can't even keep our curbs clear from weeds and tall grass, it looks terrible. And it looks as though we have no pride in our city. And I know that that's not the case. And so I would, I would behoove everyone, please, just do something that is such a minimal maintenance requirement for homeownership and business ownership. I also wanted to mention that the post office, I'm gonna say it again because I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, should be ashamed of themselves for the way the both lots look. The back lot has weeds growing in their fence line. And the Main Street lot that butts back up to southbound Grashit has debris and weeds and trees that shouldn't be in their fences, and it looks awful. And you can go to many other ci- their fences, and it looks awful, and you can go to many other cities that surround us, and their post offices do not look like that. So it is a shame that we are allowing it. I also want to mention that I have this next coming Tuesday, so not tomorrow, but a week from tomorrow, on August fifteenth at nine-thirty, a John's Family Grill, my typical monthly coffee talk, so if you have time at nine-thirty in the morning to come by, and if you have questions about local things that are happening, be happy to discuss that with you. And I will in September be continuing, or starting to reinstate a twice-monthly coffee talk, so that way, people who work on, during the day, during the week, I'll have them on Saturdays again, so I kind of took a break from Saturdays for the summer, so. If you have any other questions, please, you know, of course, feel free to contact anyone on the commission, our email addresses are on the city website. That's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill?
I'd like to start out by thanking the department heads for their reports. It's always very interesting, and I think it's good for our citizens to know what our departments are doing also. I would like to congratulate the recipients of the BCA awards, Michael Raymond, Olivia Stevanovsky, and Ian and Hope Cole. Restoring a home is a lot of hard work, takes a lot of money, and so it's nice for people to get some encouragement and recognition. I'd also like to congratulate my neighbor at thirty-three South Highland for getting her historical marker tonight, and I'd like to express my condolences to the Stark family. And that's it for me, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I too want to thank the residents that have changed their homes from multi to single-family, and the awards that they were given tonight, so thank you for that. Also, the residents that have come here tonight regarding the concerns on Washington Street, I found it ironic, too, that we were awarding, converting single-family homes, and this came up, so I totally agree with your concerns. And lastly, I want to thank the city manager and the assistant city manager. Residents have called regarding trash that is being sent out on Thursdays for Monday pickup, and rodents were getting into them, so they are taking care of that, so thank you very much for that. That's it, thank you.
Well, actually, I have a few things to say this time. Normally, when it gets to me, there's not much left, everybody's kind of done the public announcements, but I do have some public announcements, and then I have a comment that I want to make. So, first off, I'm gonna start with the public announcements, and it's kind of ironic that I'm able to present this today because of the historical plaque we received, and the three people who are converting their homes. This is from the National Historical Preservation Act from the United States Department of Interior. In celebration of the fiftieth anniversary of the National Historic Preservation Act of nineteen sixty-six, the National Park Service, Department of Interior congratulates the city of Mount Clemens, Michigan, on being a certified local government and partner in the federal preservation program since September thirtieth, two thousand and nine. So, we are being recognized for the fact, and all those people out there who are doing those great things for their homes and everything, thank you, because we are recognized, and we are one of thirty-eight in, no, I take that back, thirty-eight new communities in the United States that have received this, but I think, and I apologize when I'm hitting it right off the top of my head, we are one of just a few in the state of Michigan, so that says a lot, and it goes to the people who are doing the work to help preserve our history and our historical buildings and all of that. Secondly, my other public announcement, find it here, two more, bear with me. Mission Day, Clinton Place Apartments, which is on the River Road, for everyone, for those who don't know, they're having their second annual Clinton Place Fun Fest on August eighteenth, from eleven to two, on the River Road, one forty-seven River Road, and they're going to have a day of events, and what they're trying to do is raise money to provide playscapes for children, a dog run for seniors with pets, so they're going to have foods, games, and prizes, it's, they're asking to buy tickets, ten dollars, five dollars for ten tickets for the luncheon, so if you're just happening to be out and about, and you want to help Clinton Place Apartments and their community over there to achieve their goals in helping them, please.
What's the date for that again?
August eighteenth, and you can contact Kyle Belts, and his number is five-eight-six-four-six-nine-one-four-eight-eight. This is their second year of doing this, so. The other one, gives me special honors to bring this up, because I've met this young man, Ron Waldman III. He is doing his project for an Eagle Scout, he's going for his Eagle Scout, and his project is to collect paper products for Turning Point. Ron is doing this for Boy Scout Troop fourteen eighty-nine, Life Scout. He's been working on this project, it's probably, I think when his mom came to me, it's been over six months that they were planning this. So they're going to have drop-off and pickup on August twelfth, and he's kind of doing it in his Seminole Hills area, that's where he lives, so people can put their stuff outside on their porches and whatever have you, on Saturday the twelfth, and he'll come around and pick it up. But if anybody else would like to donate products like paper cups, paper towels, garbage cans, garbage bags, toilet paper, facial tissue, you can contact Ron at five-eight-six-four-one-nine-five-three-five-eight. And he's a, he's an exceptional young man, so I hope that we all can help him out with his project. Now, my rant, no, I'm not gonna rant, I don't rant. I just want to, I just want to make a comment, because social media can be good and bad, we all know that. Those of you who have Facebook pages know how out of hand things can get, how emotional people can get. I think it's very important, when you're looking at somebody's Facebook page, or a Mount Clemens page, and they start talking about what's going on in Mount Clemens, to please find out the facts, because ninety-nine times out of a hundred, those things that are being posted on those Facebook pages are not true, partially true, and all it does, it works the community up. So if you're gonna be responsible on social media, make sure you put the facts out there, not just what you think the facts are. Find out, you can, if it's something to do with the city, you can call City Hall, they will answer your questions. You can call the commissioners, preferably call City Hall, because a lot of times the commissioners don't always know everything also, and we post emotionally, and we stir things up that do not need to be stirred up. So just be responsible on Facebook, and call, that's all I ask. Get the facts, whether we like it or not, whatever the facts are, they are the facts, and I think it's just, I just get very upset when I read what's out there, and I will not respond, because I know it will just start another frenzy, you know, because I may be saying something, and somebody, ah, she's just saying that because she's the mayor, but that's not it. So I won't get caught up in that, please, 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 out in television land, call the responsible people and ask them, is it true that this is happening? Is this true? Is it false? I'm hearing this. So that's my rant for the evening. Thank you, and I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting adjourned.